It's 6 o'clock, August 1st, 6:00 PM, 2022. I am calling to order the public hearing. Roll call, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young is not here yet.
For consideration of legislation tonight, it's the Plating Committee, who the plating chair is Mr. Mark McKiever. So under considering, I'm sorry, under consideration at this meeting...
His proposed amendment to Bucyrus zoning code 1157.02, official zoning district map to re-designate the southern part of Crawford County parcel identification number 440013848100 along Red Oak Court from apartment residential district to residential estate district to allow for development consistent with existing uses. Number two, his proposed amendment to Bucyrus zoning code 1157.02, official zoning district map, excuse me, official zoning district map to re-designate to Crawford County parcel identification numbers 0800188900001, 080018898000, and 080018899001 in the area of 510 North Sandusky Avenue from general business district to downtown business district to accommodate development consistent with existing uses. And number three, proposed consideration of BCO 1151.05B reinstating a non-conforming use of, at 1050 South Sandusky Avenue, Crawford County parcel identification number 080014843000 to allow for a chiropractic office in the suburban residential district.
The notice of the public hearing was published in the Bucyrus Telegraph Forum on June 28th and July 5th. Today, anyone interested in expressing their opinions about the proposed changes may do so by approaching the podium. Each person is asked to state their name, address, and whether they are a proponent or an opponent of the proposed application. Five minutes will be allotted for each guest. Everyone is asked to keep in mind that this is a public hearing being held only to share information. No decision will be made at this time, and all information presented will be considered by the plating committee and/or appropriate committees at a later date. Plating committee comments?
Plating committee is in favor of all three of the proposals for you today.
Thank you. All right, in consideration of the Bucyrus codified ordinance 1157.02 regarding Red Oak Court, anyone wishing to comment on that? No proponents or opponents? May I have a motion to refer the preceding subject back to the plating committee for further study?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Regarding Bucyrus codified ordinance 1157.02, 510, 520 North Sandusky Avenue, do we have any proponents?
I have some letters, but...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine, we'll do the letters last.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, I'm Randy Fisher, live at 855 Cherry Lane in Bucyrus. And for full disclosure, I'm the president of Norton Bicentennial, Inc., the entity that owns the two parcels that we're talking about tonight. We, again, I want to make that clear because I think there is some confusion. Norton Bicentennial, Inc. owns these properties. City does not, and we intend to keep it that way. We have identified this site, it's, our organization's an offshoot of the Bicentennial Commission, and we identified this site as a project that we would, wanted to undertake to not, you know, we had a lot of fun last year, we had a parties, but we wanted to do something permanent, permanently improve Bucyrus. So we identified this project. I would think by any measure, it is an eyesore, and particularly as it sits along, probably at least on weekends, busiest thoroughfare in this county, which is State Route 98 and Route 4. All the traffic going to and from Lake Erie drives right by that site. We have a beautiful downtown, and even starting in the south end of downtown, we have a very nice, nice town, you get to that, and it, it's, it's not pretty. So, it is an unusual site because, one, it sits, again, as it sits along a busy, busy thoroughfare, it also sits adjacent to the Sandusky River, which has a tendency to flood. It, it also butts up against, on the east side, to the Bay Area soccer fields, Harmon Park. Because of the propensity of this site to flood, traditional retail is not an option. In fact, the previous owner, or one of the past owners tried to, tried to, just recently tried to put a Domino's pizza there, couldn't happen. He couldn't do it, and the owner said, even if I could do it, I couldn't get the, afford the insurance because of, again, of the flooding. So, we say this somewhat jokingly, but there's a truth to it, that planting grass on this site is like the highest and best use for it, because you really just can't put any buildings there. There's a spike in the telephone pole out along Sandusky that's about, comes up to this height, my head. Anything that's built there that's occupied has to be above, above that, above that mark. So again, it's difficult, very difficult. It also sits right across the street from the, the site where the Norton family, Mary and Sam Norton, built their first permanent residence in Bucyrus. It's been well documented that Johnny Appleseed planted trees, apple trees, just up on the, on the hill there in front of Arby's, so within a few hundred feet. And we don't have a proper monument for the Norton's. We'd like to acknowledge the, the contribution Johnny Appleseed made to this community, and just to make it a green space. Again, is planting grass is going to be a great improvement to it, but we also have other plans. We have plans, again, for a dog park to put there, and some playground equipment eventually. But to, and then the city has plans to, to have bike, bike and walking trails that extend east and west, out from the center down to downtown, out to the park, to Allmiller Park and out east. This could serve as a trailhead for those, for those, for those paths. It's just a lot of different uses. Now, to the point about, well, if you can't put traditional retail there, how can we take advantage of that? I know, we're always trying to figure out how we can take advantage of that, that, that traffic that drives through town. One idea we have is to put, provide for food truck parking along Sandusky, in an area for people to dine. So if you're a young family, driving from Columbus, or from Southern Ohio, to the lake on a Friday night, and you've got young kids and dogs in your car, you could stop midpoint, let the dogs run, let the kids run, get a sandwich, we're gonna have it, we are gonna do a small restroom that's flood resistant with a changing station, so you can take care of that, get in the car and head, head north or south if you're coming back on Sunday. So, we just, we just feel that's the, that is a, it's a way that we can take advantage of its location and not, and not have to deal with, with the flooding. I will say that we have received strong support from the community. We have donations for this project from Ohio Health, Avita Health, People Savings Loan, Clubview Vision Center, Firelands Bank, Park National Bank, First Federal Community Bank, Wise Feener Home, Castle Auctions and Appraisals, McKiever and Associates. Individual donations from a number of individuals, including Sue and Denny Norton, Denny's a sixth generation descendant from Sam Norton. We have received donations from the community foundation. And just recently, you may have seen in the newspaper this past week, we received a total $527,000 in grants from the state of Ohio. The biggest one has to be used to demolish the ice plant and hopefully the surrounding asphalt. That is being administered from the county land bank. So, and then we also received $175,000 from the state through their biennial capital bill. So, we've received, I think that totals up to just under $675,000 thus far in, in donations to get this project started. For those that oppose, I would just say, what else can you do with this site? What, what, what else can you do with it? Because, and so, again, we just think putting, putting a, a, a green space there with a number of different amenities would, is, is the great thing to do for that, for that, for that part of town. And again, it's privately owned, we don't, we intend to establish an endowment similar to what's, what's going on at Millennial Park on the square, which is also privately owned, so that, to fund ongoing maintenance of the park. We don't intend to put anything there that would be, could be destroyed by floodwaters. So, if it floods, fine, well, grass is better than asphalt in what comes to absorbing water from, from flooding. And we'll get the hoses out, hose, hose the equipment down, and we'll be open for business again.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Myers has a question.
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
One of the only things that you didn't touch on that I've heard a little bit of opposition to, and I know with your experience in the architecture field, I think you've already looked at this, I would just give you the opportunity to answer to it. One of the things that has been brought up is, you know, the busy thoroughfare, how, you know, you could have children that are playing close to the road and things like that. So what do you have in your plans that will help, help with that?
Well, thanks. We will certainly abide by all the setback regulations and codes when it comes to children and the street, but the playground equipment is, is, is going to be set back 200 feet from, from Sandusky Avenue. And so, that should be, and will be fenced in. So if you let the kids run, they're not, it's going to be very difficult for them to get to Sandusky. I would also just say too, that you can drive completely around Allmiller Park, within close distance of the shelters, the basketball courts, the ballfields, all that. So, now, if you're driving 15 miles an hour to Allmiller Park, understand that you're going to be driving faster than that on Sandusky. But the main point is that it, that equipment's going to be, the public stuff's going to be up front along Sandusky, the more private uses, like kids playing on a playground, will be back away from Sandusky. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thanks.
I'm Kevin Rossball, I live at 509 East Mansfield Street, and I also own the property at 509 North Sandusky Avenue. I'm not against, against the park at all. I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, and I'm not against it. But what I am concerned about is playground equipment being put there, because I am a registered state supporter, I do intend to move into that house that I've been renovating for the last few years, and that poses a problem for me. The Supreme Court's already ruled that the city cannot do that. However, there is a way around it. If you leave the playground equipment out of the scenario, or keep it 500 feet away from my property, it's not a problem. But if you come within 500 feet, then it's a problem. I put a letter in there, I don't, I'm assuming you're gonna read it, if there's questions, I'll answer them at that time, so.
First off, I suppose to respond, the city's not building anything.
Right. It doesn't matter who builds it, from my understanding.
Parks are not included in the statute you're referring to as schools and childcare facilities.
Okay, well, I was understanding...
And playgrounds on school buildings would fall out.
If that's the case, then we're good. There's no problem. Like I said, I'm not against it.
I know.
I just want to make sure it doesn't cause a problem for me, or...
The statute that you're referring to, the statute you're referring to has nothing to do with parks.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Hey, y'all. Jesse Ferner, 118 West Southern, former director of the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to show my support. I believe in the future of Bucyrus, and I think adding another park in the place of what we have now, all other things aside, is going to help us to enhance property values, increase municipal revenue, bring in home buyers, workers, and attract retirees. I'd love to see a park there, plan to take my dog. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Rhonda Rowland, 4571 Home Center Road, Bucyrus, Ohio. Thanks for allowing us to speak this evening. You know, I'm vice president of the Norton, Inc., but really, in my heart, I'm just, I'm just a very proud citizen of Bucyrus, Ohio. Raised, I was raised here, my family was raised here, and I just love Bucyrus, and I love to see beautiful things happen in Bucyrus. So, I just want to share a couple things with you. Bucyrus is a beautiful place to live, and our goal with this park is to make it even more eye-catching for those who might be lucky enough to pass through our beautiful city. By removing some of the relics of the past and installing a space that can be utilized and enjoyed, we are investing, investing in the future of Bucyrus. I am the grandmother of a seven-month-year-old, and I'm over, over the moon excited about that, and I look forward to the day when I can stop by and we can play together and make sweet memories in this place I am blessed to call home. Not only will these improvements raise property values and increase tourism, they will also be a physical picture of the values we seek to uphold. Connection with one another, connection to the community, and from the wise words of our leader from a Bicentennial Commission, "Community Unity." Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else?
Good evening, and thank you again for having us. My name's Kelly Patterson, 416 West Oakwood Avenue. I am a Norton Bicentennial, Inc. board member. I'm also a Chamber Commerce board member and a City of Bucyrus employee. I'm like Rhonda, I'm just a City of Bucyrus resident that just really appreciates Bucyrus and the beauty. I'm going to reiterate a lot of what Rhonda and Randy have already said. We worked really hard with the Bicentennial, getting a lot of support from the community. Like Randy said, we had a lot of support from a lot of members. The banners are still up, you can read through, all the way down from Charles Street, all the way down to Norton Bicentennial, Inc., all of the businesses that have been in absolute support of everything that we're planning. Anybody who wants to see any of, you know, our, our site plan, I have it over in my office, we can go over that stuff. We have a lot of passion for what we want to do with this. One of our board members, she does live in Texas, but she's been a major driving force. One of the things that you might want to see recently, she helped revamp the Hopley Monument. I mean, you know, even though she's in Texas, she loves Bucyrs. One of the things that I would love to see, when the Freddy's building was coming down, Randy actually saved one of the panes. Over the doorway of Freddy's, you might recall that it had their design, it looks kind of like a, like a flower, or, you know, that's how I describe it, you know what I mean? It was like that. So what, what I would like to see is like during the Bratwurst Festival, you do the, at the helicopter rides, so like when you're like up above, or in a plane, or something, you might be able to see it a little more of, of my vision, I guess, is how it is. But those walking paths that you'll see, I would like to use that shape and make those walking paths, you know, maybe something like that, we could do a tribute to Freddy's, or, you know, Freddie and Idadag, or, you know, something along those lines, you know, really pull in that, that history, you know. So there's, there's going to be a lot of thought to all of that kind of thing. Elaine did a lot of research with Mary Lee Minor on Sandusky River plantings. So there's going to be a lot of plantings that are native to the Sandusky River, things that are going to help with erosion, you know, things that are going to really help, you know, with that area. So, yes, there is going to be flooding, you know, we never want that flooding, but it does happen, so, you know, we, we will have a lot of thought in that. We've, we've reached out to, like, the schools, you know, things that they could potentially do, like the 4H clubs, you know, stuff like that. So there, there is so much more community into what this park is going to represent. One of the, one of our board members, she's Shelley Bergen, she is a member, she works at Avita. You know, her and I have talked about this, you know, I'm sure we've all had lunch up at Avita in the cafeteria, you know, they have that beautiful view over, over Bucyrs, you know, so, you know, that will just be one more pretty thing that you're going to be able to see, is just a pretty green space. And, you know, Shelley's mentioned that, you know, they have lunch up there, but they really would like to, you know, have, be able to, you know, take their lunch and maybe walk down there and have another place to sit and eat, and, you know, maybe they'll be able to, you know, pick up a gyro, or pick up an Arby's sandwich, or something, or whatever, they can come and have another place to sit. So, you know, again, this is just, just giving people just another place to be, or, you know, something like that, or, you know, like Randy said, when you're passing through, you know, you know, you've got a carload of kiddos, you know, I mean, for all of us that have had kids, kiddos, whatever, you know, you get that, you know, you've got a dog, you know, I can't really go into Wendy's, or, you know, whatever, you know, that kind of stuff. So, I mean, that's really the thought process behind it. It's not that these food trucks are going to take away from our businesses, or that kind of stuff, but it's just kind of like, you know, Jesse started a lot of stuff with the, with the chamber, you know, all these, these great events, and, you know, having the food trucks, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, just, just having something that's going to, that's extend that, or, I'm sorry, extend that downtown business, and, you know, we've talked about, you know, some different events, once we kind of get this, this going a little bit, you know, maybe extend that Candlelight Christmas, or, you know, maybe just a little bit, you know, maybe another night, maybe it wouldn't be that.
Can it thousand daggones up there?
Absolutely, you know, I mean, again, you know, it's just, it's just another one of those things that, you know, here we are, we're going to be able to make our downtown even bigger and better, and, you know, and now, now Country Catering, you know, they're going to maybe feel a little more included, and, you know, during the Bratwurst Festival, and I know Kevin, you know, you've really, really worked really hard to try to get past the tracks, you know, a little more into the Bratwurst Festival, and, you know, maybe, maybe that's just going to make that part of down, that part of downtown feel a little more included. So, you know, that's really the premise behind wanting to make downtown part of this Norton Bicentennial, Inc. park, you know what I mean? So there, there's so much more behind just, you know, just this park, or, you know, whatever. I mean, you know, so quality of life is so important. When I go away on vacation, what do I want? I want to go someplace. I want to do things, I want to have something to do, I want to, you know, whatever. So again, it's just something to attract people. Oh my gosh, look what Bucyrs is doing, you know, they're doing something else, you know. So again, you know, that's, that's just really where we're at with all of this, and we appreciate your time and your consideration to all of this, so we appreciate you, and thank you.
Jim Richardson, 316 River Street. And I'm going to be a stickler on this. I'm opposing this park when there's a park 80 feet away. I'm opposing this park when you're at a very dangerous intersection. And I'm opposing this park because that area will never get used. The only thing he issues now for is people parking their cars there, parking their semi-trucks there when they get in off the road. They tearing down the buildings, that's an improvement 1,000 times. But, the thing about it is, is that affects me and everybody on River Street, because that place is in a flood plain. A third of it is in a floodway. When I was flooded out in '07, I wanted to put up a flood wall in front of my house. Can't do it. Army Corps of Engineers says, no. You cannot change the level, elevation, or decrease any property. You change anything down there in that park now, my floodwaters are going to rise, and the rest of that block too. I see no reason to put it there. We have other parks, we have other lands, traffic is horrible, and you go putting kids across there, it's just going to put their lives in danger. You know, this whole thing needs to be done with a little bit of common sense, because we've got a factory building right there on the corner, takes forever for people to get out off of River Street onto Sandusky. There's been a couple accidents there, and that's all I'm looking out for. There is no crossway across Sandusky Street nowhere, Perry Street to Irving. Nobody can cross. So, let alone putting in a park, then you're either going to have to put up a stoplight, which we do not need, or you're going to have to put in a crosswalk, which will have the people that drive through town that are from out of town, or is going to the lake and back, they don't pay attention to our laws anyway. So, you might want to rethink this situation, because it's going to be very dangerous, putting something there in that location. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, one thing just to let you know, I will, you don't have to, you can respond. I will make sure that on our next traffic commission meeting, that we have that on our agenda to look at crosswalks in that area.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Randy Fisher again. Just in regards to one comment, we are, we have no intention of changing the elevations of the ground there. We have a, in fact, one of our consultants attached to our, to the architect has expertise in working with FEMA, because we know FEMA is going to have, FEMA will approve these drawings. And so, nothing will be done there without their approval, and I believe they would, they would keep, they would not increase the level of flooding there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Taylor. I'm the manager of the Swan Marketplace on East Mansfield Street, and we were wondering, we've, we've been working on it for two years, and we have got, done everything that we were supposed to get done, we've had fire doors put in, everything else that's been done. We had the architectural engineer come in, and he told me that there is no reason why we can't open up and fix what minor things are going on.
What you're addressing, you're going to have to wait for a regular council meeting to do? This is specific to these three areas?
Oh, I'm sorry, they would tell me...
No, no, that's fine.
It'll be around, like, probably, depending on how long this lasts, it could be around 7:00 o'clock. So, you can leave your...
We'll let you know when we're ready for that part.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We were just trying to see if we could get open up in time for the US 30 thing and the Bratwurst Festival.
Yeah, it's, the meeting is tonight, so if you want to wait...
It's tonight?
Yeah.
After this meeting.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Kevin, I was just listening to Mr. Fisher talking about the restrooms that they're going to put in, and I'm kind of curious, because with my house, I had to make certain changes and alterations because of FEMA, and one of the things they said is, one of the buildings down there, if you do certain amount of money into the property, your building has to be raised 16 feet into the air above the floodwaters. So how are they going to put a bathroom 16 feet into the air? So, that's just something I'm just throwing out there for some people to think about.
The rule you're referencing is if you're renovating in a flood plain...
Renovating, yes.
Right.
But my understanding, you can't build two.
Right, so I'm sure they have their FEMA...
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there, in case I hadn't thought about it.
That is probably not habitational, so.
Right, right.
Anybody else?
Scott Britner, 424 Sierra Street. I have one question. I ain't opposed to it, and I ain't for it, but what's this thing going to cost after it's built? What's the operating cost?
Are you talking, cost to the city?
Yeah.
There's no cost to the city.
Privately owned.
Just like Millennium Park at the mural at the square, we do not put any money towards that. It is all privately funded, the money is handled through the community foundation, they have a trust in there that the money is maintained to maintain that park. We do nothing to it, we, none of, if Jeff Dunn was here, he would tell you that not one of the city workers go down there to do anything on, on city time.
So who's going to take care of this park?
The private business?
The private business that's going, is taking care of it, which is the Norton Bicentennial Corporation.
So they're going to take care of the landscape, 509 yards, something...
It's their responsibility, they take on ownership, and they are no cost from the city, we are not, Joyce can tell you, there's not a line item anywhere in the budget.
So five, 10 years from now, they're going to say taxpayers don't have to pay nothing for it, later on down the line?
They are, Millennium Park, how long has that been there? 12 years, 15 years?
1,000 now?
2,000. So, and we have not put a dime into it, and they're going to maintain the money to get it...
What I wanted to find out, I want to find out if there's any, any cost somewhere down the line, because it sounds like you're going to have to rebuild this thing, you're going to tear a bunch of stuff down, and all this stuff going in, all your landscaping and your equipment that you're putting up, I mean...
What they're going to do is, if they need more money, they will do a fundraiser to raise money to maintain it. raise money to maintain it. It's not gonna be from the city. There's nothing in our budget, and-
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just in fact, at our last meeting-
It's okay.
Randy Fisher again. At our last board meeting, we, we authorized the Community Foundation to set up that fund for us, so there's an endowment fund that would, that would endow and pay for, pay for the maintenance. We want to design it, it'll be a very, very low maintenance place. As was mentioned, native grasses and things, it won't need a lot of trimming, won't need a lot of cutting, so, yeah. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to say that, sitting up here, the, the plating committee in this meeting and council, we're doing no more for this than we are doing for the Red Oak Estates, and this next project, you know, someone came to council, wants us to change the zoning, so that they can do their project, whatever it is, whether it's apartment buildings or, or, or contractor office, and we are just doing what we do, and the rest of it's all on them, so, so.
Anybody else? Somebody asked me the other day if this was going to end up making it so that the deer that are already down in Herman Field area are gonna come more towards the main road, because we've got an entire large family of deer down at the soccer field all the time. So, right now, they're not really coming up to the ice plant as much, but with that all opened and with it being grass, is that gonna become a problem for the city?
I, I, may I?
Yeah.
The deer problem is relevant to West Southern Avenue, especially, Terry can tell you, anybody, there, there, I've seen in my yard on Poplar Street. So, they're everywhere, but mainly, it's, there may be a problem, but it's a deer population, which, how are we gonna control that? That's throughout the city, it's not just there.
There was one head on the Mary Street extension past Kirkland. Right.
Right.
Well, that, that's where they've been staying, was that side, Mary Street and Lane Street. All right, do we have any other proponents or opponents? All right. We have the letters. Oh, yes, please. Okay, sorry.
Okay. So, we have a couple of votes. I'm gonna start with each opponent. So, the first one says, Dear Council, I wanted to share my support to rezoning and extending the downtown business district. As the president of the Bucyrus Area Chamber of Commerce, we support all businesses and look towards new areas for them to drive, to thrive in. The Norton Bicentennial Park will beautify the current space and help generate economic improvement in the area. I believe Bucyrus has a beautiful downtown, and these improvements will continue to attract new business in the area. Thank you, Veronica Hildreth. One was from Kevin, which you already spoke, so, do you agree with what you like? Okay. And then, we have another from Lutz Bros. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter in regard, in regard to the rezoning of the downtown business district in close proximity to the strip mall area my brother and I own. My brother and brother-in-law and I are fully, fully support the building of a park in this area. It will make our strip mall look better and will greatly help improve the look of our downtown area. The removal of the old Freddy's restaurant has made a big difference in the appearance of our downtown. This project will improve our city and allow opportunities for citizens to enjoy it. Let's get this project started and continue to work towards enhancing our community. Thank you, Jim Lutz. And then, the last one here is opposed, and this is from Kurt Finkhauser. To Bucyrus City Council, I am writing to let you know, I am firmly opposed to the rezoning of 510 North Sandusky Avenue from the general business district to the, I don't know, Neighbors? Is it Neighbors?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood, okay. This area is high-traffic and would be dangerous and unsafe to develop to, as, or develop a park. When I own this property, there is constant issues pulling out onto Sandusky due to the high amount of traffic, which I, which will surely be worse with a park there. Also, the flooding will be a disaster, not if, but when it happens. Sincerely, Kurt Finkhauser.
That's all. All right. May I have a motion to refer the preceding subject back to the plating committee for further study?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Regarding Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 115, I'm sorry, 1151.05B for 1050 South Sandusky Street, proponents or opponents? Please step to the podium.
Jim Richardson, 316 River Street. I am for that. That's been businesses there for years. I've seen a reason why she's had to go through all this. It should've just been a simple matter of saying yes to let them run that business there. There was a grocery store when I was a little boy, then it became a tattoo shop and everything else. And I just think we wasted a lot of people's time doing all this, but I'm all for that, because little businesses like that we need in this town as well. Thank you.
John Rostache, City of Bucyrus zoning administrator and resident 1115 Dean Street. I'm in favor of this. It's the first real test of our new code, and it's a way to get a property that's fallen into discontinuance and put it back into viable use in our community. So, I would highly recommend that council pass this piece of legislation and allow Mrs. Haldeman to practice her chiropractic office there and become a member of our community. I've talked to her several times. She loves Bucyrus, and she's tremendously excited to, to open her office here. If you look at the building, she's invested a lot of money in the roof and the interior to bring it, to make it a viable building. So, we've had a lot of people that have, or several people that have called and, or have submitted letters in favor of it, so, please, do, do pass this piece of legislation and allow her to continue. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other? Do you have a letter?
We received a letter from Bruce McKeon. He said, Hi, I have no problem with the chiropractic office. It is across the street from my home. I hope it goes well for them. Again, that's Bruce McKeon.
Okay. Anybody else? May I have a motion to refer the preceding subject back to the plating committee for further study?
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor? So, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Y'all sound the same over there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Young?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at, there you go. 6:38. 6:38.